Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Monday, October 7th, 2024. It's 2:03 PM. My name is Ty Mansur, Chair of the Board. Commissioner Rain Fornier, Vice Chair. Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards are participating virtually. County Manager here, Leonard Hernandez, in the boardroom. Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. Budget Manager, is that your job title, Summer Miller? Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have a couple of standing items and one specific item to take up this afternoon. First up is 2025 Employee Benefits with HR. So, our HR team behind me, they will move forward and present the first item.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Maria Ponte, HR Director. With me today is Tara Wickline. She's a Compensation Benefits Manager. And with also joining us today, which she normally doesn't, is Mesa Kaywood. And she's a Senior HR Analyst on the Benefits and Payroll Team.
Glad to have you.
And today I'll be handing off the presentation to Tara. And she's going to be going over the 2025 increases to medical benefits. And we will be asking you to adopt the Kaiser/Washington Value Plan.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. Thanks for your time this afternoon. Appreciate it. Hopefully, try to make this not quite too painful. So as Maria said, we're here today about 2025 county contributions towards employee benefit premiums. This is something that we come to the Board every year. And what we do is essentially when HR receives the new benefit premium amounts each year from the carriers, we go through an exercise and we look at several different factors when determining what to bring forth to the Board as a recommendation. We look at obviously the cost of the premium increases, the impact to employees, what that's going to do to recruitment and retention. And of course, everyone's number one goal is what that impact to the budget is going to be. So I wanted to start by just illustrating the county's medical plan enrollment. We actually offer 11 different medical plans, which is kind of crazy. But 75% of our employees are covered on only two different plans, Kaiser Classic and Uniform Classic. So those are the plans that I kind of want to focus today when it comes to what our recommendation is going to impact for both employee deductions and county contributions.
Is there an advantage to having all those different ones? I mean...
Well, it's really since our medical is with the PEB, it's what they offer. So we don't have a ton of choices there.
Doesn't harm us in any way to have those other choices.
No, certainly not.
Okay. You said a medical with the PEB?
Yes, Public Employees Benefit Board.
Okay.
So it's the same organization. It's run through the healthcare authority. And that's where all like state employees have their medical and some other... We're considered an employer group as a county.
So we then just negotiate, or they negotiate on our behalf? Or there's no direct negotiation because they do it collectively?
Correct.
So if they have the cafeteria plans, we take advantage of it?
Right. Yeah, the main difference between the county receiving their coverage through the PEB versus like a state agency is the states have set rates that the state is going to pay and then what employees are going to pay. Whereas as an employer group, it's up to the Commissioners what the county is going to pay towards coverage and what balances the employees are going to have to pay after that. So for 2025, increases or changes to premiums were kind of all over the board. Our most utilized plan, that Uniform Classic, increased by 7%. The second most utilized plan increased by, or actually decreased by 4.3%. And that's the Kaiser Classic. Our current highest standard plan, and I will define what that means here in a couple of slides, that actually increased by 11.7%, which was one of the main driving factors for us to come to you and ask for you to change the highest standard plan. So when we look at what is a standard versus a non-standard plan, the county pays full premiums for employee-only coverage for all plans that are designated as standard. A standard plan is any plan from the highest standard plan and down as far as what they cost, what the premiums are. The county pays 85% of dependent premiums, but will never pay more than the amount of that highest standard plan. So designated, the highest standard plan helps the county to budget and know exactly what they may or may not be liable for, how it's going to impact the budget. So this next slide, I was trying to kind of better illustrate what that highest standard plan means. This is a list of all of the plans, or most of the plans. And you can see in the blue box in the middle, that's the county-paid benefit. That UMP Plus, which is the current highest standard plan, you can see that all plans that cost more above that, the amount the county's paying isn't changing. But what that does is it means that the employees essentially have to buy up. And that's why there's employee deductions for the plans above the highest standard plan. And any high standard plan and lower, employees don't pay anything for their own coverage. Do we have any questions about that before I go on? I know that's...
So... So if... If like, let's say the Kaiser/Washington Classic went down. And because if that was under the line, that wouldn't save the employee any money because the county's paying it. But if it's above the line, then the employee would benefit a little bit because then the cost went down by 4.3%?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, and if somebody is adding, you know, family members on, then they might be paying as well, even on a plan that's below the line?
Yes, there's always a cost share with dependents because the county pays 85% of dependent premiums. The employee pays 15%. And that's only up to that highest standard plan. So again, if they're on one of the more expensive plans, they pay that 15% plus whatever that additional amount is to buy up.
Okay. That chart though doesn't tell us, like, you gave us the two that are most...
Right, yep. This is just to illustrate.
We don't know how the others went up or down, just the two you gave us. Pipe up, Commissioners, if you have questions. It's kind of complicated. Go ahead.
Okay. So for 2025, we wanted to bring forth two different options. We have one that we want to recommend, but we'd like to give options. The two options that we would like to put forth is the Uniform Select Plan and the Kaiser/Washington Value Plan. What this slide shows you, the kind of top box there, are current deductions for what employees pay on Uniform Classic and Kaiser Classic, again, our two most favored plans. The bottom section shows you what employees will pay if we went with Uniform Select as the highest standard plan versus Kaiser Value as the highest standard plan. And this is just the employee deduction side of things. So you can see if we go with Uniform Select, those who are on Uniform Classic today, which is our most favorite plan, premiums for an employee only are going to jump from about $15 to $50. On Kaiser Classic, of course, that one had the decrease. So no matter what plan we go with Kaiser Classic, people are going to be happy this year. That one, you're going to go from $117 and it's going to jump down to paying 45. If we went with Kaiser Value, a little different, not as much of a change. That Uniform Classic that's paying $15 today, they'll pay $14 in 2025. And then the Kaiser Classic goes from 117 down to $9. So Kaiser Classic also had a huge increase last year. And it was, it was big. It was big enough for us to personally contact every employee that was on Kaiser Classic last year and suggest that they look at their rates and maybe change plans. So I think they're due for a decrease. So the next slide shows what the county's contributions look like depending on which highest standard plan we go with. So on this one, you can see, so in today's world, the highest that the county is going to pay for a medical plan is $892 for employee-only coverage. If we go with Uniform Select, that increases to $920. If we go with Kaiser Value, it goes up to $956. So at the max, we're looking at a $60 per employee increase. Of course, with the family coverage, that always increases everything. As far as impacts to budget, if we go with Uniform Select, that's approximately a $13,000 decrease in what was budgeted for next year. With Kaiser Value, it's about a $31,000 increase. So not huge, but there is still a budgetary impact there. So looking at all the different factors that HR takes into account, what we are recommending is that the Board adopt the Kaiser/Washington Value Plan as the highest standard plan for 2025. At the least amount of impact to a majority of employees, there's a relatively small impact to the budget. And the county continues to offer excellent, affordable benefits that definitely helps with our recruitment and retention. Now before we, well, actually, before I go on, are there any questions about the medical recommendation at this point?
Chair.
Can we, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
What's a small impact to the budget? What does that mean?
That was the $31,000 overall for 2025. And as far as general fund, that works out to about $14,000 to the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. I was wondering if we can go back a couple of slides to show kind of the differences that employees would be paying with both of them?
Sure, if I can figure out how to go back. I don't know how to go back. Oh, there we go, okay. You wanted the deductions, correct?
Yes.
All right. So this is what employees are looking at depending on which plan we go with for our highest standard.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So then this year is a little different. Normally, we would stop the presentation right here and ask for a decision, but the PEB, Public Employees Benefit Board, decided to throw us for a little bit of a loop this year. So vision coverage, this is another decision that we're going to be asking about. The current county employees are all double-covered for vision if they're covered on medical. There's a vision benefit in each of our medical plans, but we also have a standalone vision plan through the Washington County's Insurance Fund, WCIF. So today, we're all double-covered. It's been that way for many, many years, at least prior to the 10 years that I've been here. The PEB announced that they are removing the vision benefit from the medical plans in 2025, and they're going to be offering standalone vision and dental. The only way for us to continue vision with the PEB would to, would be to move all benefits over to the PEB, which means we're not getting our dental through WCIF, our vision, or any of the extra lines of coverage that we get through them, which are all of our work site plans, our critical illness, our voluntary life. We actually have quite a few lines of coverage with WCIF. So what our suggestion is to mitigate the impact of having essentially half the vision benefits that we currently have, this slide just shows you what the current coverage is today, what we receive through the PEB and also through WCIF. What we have learned is that WCIF offers an enhanced vision plan, which essentially gives us double hardware benefits. Employees would still only be eligible for one exam each year, but they would be eligible for a pair of glasses or contacts each year rather than the normal two-year wait. One really good thing above just having the enhanced benefits is the vision plans through WCIF. Their premiums, for the most part, went down for 2025, which is great. So when we're looking at what the change in this vision plan does to both employees and the county, you can see the standard plan is what employees and the county pay for employee on each coverage tier in 2025 rates if we stayed with the plan that we're on today. But if we moved to the extended plan, that's how the rates are going to change. So it's essentially a dollar more that the county's paying for an employee-only coverage, excuse me. And I think the biggest increase would be $5 for employee and family coverage next year to get double benefits on our vision plan and keep everybody with the same level of vision that they have today.
Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you. Thank you for this. I've actually gotten asked by a couple of people about this, the vision coverage, because everyone received letters in the mail from PEB about this. And so I'm wondering, once the Board makes the decision, can this go out to employees?
Absolutely. We've been waiting for this meeting because, yes, we've been getting a lot of questions about it too. But we didn't want to, you know, say anything or even, you know, suggest that we might have a solution without speaking to the Board first.
The email is already drafted.
I almost hit send every day.
So do you want to go over what the general fund is to the vision?
Yes, I see Commissioner Fornier has his... Oh, okay. Oh, perfect.
That's just a thumbs up.
Well, yeah, I like those. Okay, so this is just a recap of the decisions. You can see on here, when it comes to changing our vision plan to that enhanced plan, it's roughly a $45,000 a year impact. About $21,000 of that directly ties to the general fund. So again, not a huge impact, but there is still definitely an impact to budget. So I think what we're looking for this afternoon is, you know, any questions that anyone has, that they haven't asked. And then also to ask the Board to designate the highest standard plan. Of course, we're recommending Kaiser Value, but we do have the option of Uniform Select. And then also to authorize HR to change our vision plan with WCIF from the standard plan to the extended plan.
Chair.
Yes.
What's the overall impact if we follow the staff recommendation?
With both...
It looks like $35,000 to the general fund. The majority of that coming from the vision piece?
Yeah.
But I did hear that's a better deal for recruitment and retention. Is that what I heard?
Yes. What I'll add is we get a lot of positive feedback that we have great benefits here, medical, dental, and vision at the county. So it is something that's very appealing for new hires in particular. So definitely, there's a tie-in to our benefits making this place appealing too.
Yes, and applicants are getting savvy. We get contacted by a lot of potential employees wanting benefit information, which is great. I like that they know what they're getting into.
Yes, I'm confused on the vision piece. I just, I've never used it and I don't really understand double coverage and extension coverage relates to double coverage and why I would need any of that.
So in today's world, if I go in and get, so I wear contacts all the time and my readers go, so I can get that age. But in today's world, I could go and get contacts and bill that to my vision service plan through WCIF. And I could also turn around on that same visit and get an updated pair of glasses and bill that to my medical plan. Because that medical plan's going away, for me personally, it's going to go back to when I, before I worked for the county where my glasses were 10 years old because I would only buy contacts. Basically, that's my own anecdotal explanation of that. Whereas if we go with this extended, extended vision plan through WCIF, I could still get both the contacts and the glasses.
Which is what we have to...
Yes.
You used to have them, that's what's ending, and so you found this other option.
Right.
So this extended coverage, just basically, it adds benefits that kind of then sort of mimic what we had with the two different plans?
Correct.
Okay, so it's one plan, but it's a better plan?
Yes, yeah.
And we're going to pay whatever you put up on the Board for that?
And it makes it easier for employees because I know even I forget which one I use. You know, undoubtedly, I'm telling the vision place that, "I'll bill it over there." And, "Well, you don't have benefits," and you have to go back and forth. Where it takes that administrative part of it out as well.
So Tara, to go back to Commissioner Edwards' question, total impact of general fund, let's see, so there's a, there's two addition, there's a decrease, right?
Yes, yeah. If, if the Board went with Uniform Select, that would be a decrease to the general fund.
Gotcha. So the total impact is 30, based on your recommendation, 35,000?
Right. Yes, I agree with that.
So you're looking for Board direction?
Yes, please.
Open moments right around the corner.
Is there anyone that is not in agreement with the staff recommendation? I'll put it that way.
Not me.
Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
I'm good. I mean, I don't know how many, how we divide that out. 1,200 employees, they're dependents, so probably not a bad deal.
Okay, it's like you have direction.
All right. Thank you very much. You'll see this on Tuesday, where we'll make the sign resolution. So is that... Is that the resolution that gets signed Tuesday?
I think it was set for the, yes, the 10-15 agenda.
We'll review it tomorrow in the general set.
Because I'll make the signature.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to reports on external boards and committee, commissions. For our regular Commissioner Chuck In, does anyone want to start? Commissioner Mejia.
Yes. Chair, that I attended the farm tour along with several other Commissioners. And we visited multiple farms throughout Thurston County. And dairy, dairy farm, vegetable farm, a, what else did we visit? Riverbend Ranch, a tree farm, and it was, it was, it was absolutely time well spent. And I don't know, maybe we should, maybe we could send Marcy a thank you or something like that because there were, you could really tell there was a ton of stuff that was fitted and it was run like a...
We cut out there, but I think we understood the sentiment and we do have a thank you going out for the folks that helped us, our ad committee and Marcy in particular.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was awesome. I totally agree. Commissioner Mejia.
Besides the farm tour, let's see. I attended inner-city transit. And it was just a discussion on the budget, which took kind of, I think it's, it's just the time. Commissioner Fornier, thank you so much for attending TRPC for me. And that is really all. I just had meetings here and there, but nothing really to report on.
Commissioner Edwards?
I think I'll just limit it to that farm tour. I think it was time well spent. I think that's already been said. And more to come. Thank you.
I'll report on a couple of things that might be of interest to the Commission. One was Thurston Conservation District Harvest Festival was really well-done this year. It was out at the South Union Grange. There was a scarecrow making contest and a pie contest and all kinds of awards given out to volunteers. And so that was great. I attended a reception for the Evergreen College Foundation that finished a capital camp, or some kind of fundraising campaign that raised like $62 million over the course of five years. And they were basically, it was kind of a celebratory event. Their goal was like 40 million, and then they bumped it to 55 and they ended up coming up with, I think, 62. So very successful. Lots of familiar faces there. And then finally, I thought that the Commission might like to hear about the ribbon cutting I attended in Talmater for a solar-powered EV charging station at Pioneer Park. I've never seen anything like this before. It's like a platform with a big arm, solar panels. It can be picked up and moved around. It can be, requires almost zero maintenance whatsoever. You can charge two cars or bicycles into it. It's a pilot. They got money, grant, I think, through the Climate Commitment Act. And this is sort of a really cutting-edge type of technology. There's only been a few places that's got these up in Waukesha County. I believe they have four of them. Anyway, it's something to see. I encourage you to check it out. It seems to have a lot of versatility and use for the future. It's totally off the grid. So it's not connected to, it's self-sufficient. It creates its own power for charging the car and PSC need not be involved. So those are representative from PSC, and there's also a whole bunch of electric vehicles. TCAT was involved in the, in the event, so it was pretty cool.
Yeah, I saw your, I saw your post and that looked really interesting. I definitely remember checking it out, but... I definitely remember checking it out, but also the comments on your post got fairly interesting as well. There seemed to be some kind of confusion about what it really was and, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, good to know. I tend not to look at all those comments, but maybe I should check them out. Okay, so let's go to item three, Commissioner Items. Anybody having Commissioner Item needs addressing? All right. Hearing none. We've come to the end of the agenda. See everybody tomorrow at 9:00 AM.